I'd like to call the meeting to order. A roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Docken. Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pleasurable depletions?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have... Go ahead.
I just have one thing under Ms. Lanis.
Okay, under new business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have two items under new business.
Okay. And I would like to report that I have two items under new business. And Councilman DeBlick?
I have a couple items as well.
Two items under new business.
It was a short meeting.
Yeah. Do we have a... Anyone to pull any minutes from the consent items?
I've moved to approve.
Let's go ahead, Councilman. Councilmember?
Yes, I'd like to pull the minutes from August 20th, just for clarification.
August, the city council minutes? Any further?
I didn't hear a second. Was there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to pull the minutes of the city council minutes of August 20th. I would like to do that at this point if there are no other people. We will pull the minutes and we'll okay the consent items other than the city council minutes from the August 20th meeting. Do I hear a motion? So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the meetings less the city council minutes of August 20th, and we will now pull the minutes... Can I vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do have to. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We will now pull the city council minutes from August 20th. Councilmember?
Yes. Just two things. I think about two-thirds way down the page, Mr. Christensen had made a statement that the structure has worked, and I believe he said for 20 years. I don't think this reads right. It just says was worked for a year in there. And so that was one question that I had. And then the second question that I had was just seeking clarification to what we actually did approve. I know that Mr. Christensen and Mr. Ammon both had the organizational chart in front of them, but I'm not sure the rest of us did. And so I'm not sure what version they had and what we actually approved. And so I think it might be helpful for us to have a clarification on what organizational chart we actually did approve.
Should I... Would you care to speak to that, Councilman?
There's a thing called the Internet where we can go on and get it on the city website. That's where I pulled mine off. I actually carry one with me all the time. And this is the latest one.
So the one you had was the current one? Because it didn't match the one that I thought I had gotten off the Internet, so...
Okay.
I just thought maybe it should be attached to the minutes so we have a clarification of what we actually did approve as an organizational structure.
Councilman Anderson?
I think that's probably a good idea, and I'm sure staff can get us a copy of that so we all know. Because it... There was a lot of confusion. And I just think if we could just ask staff to send one to everybody, then we're all on the same page.
Do we need to make an amendment? I would offer an amendment to the minutes to reflect the addition of the printout of the organizational structure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the printout to be distributed to the council.
Added to the minutes.
I'm sorry?
Added to the minutes.
Added to the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. The city council minutes dated August 20th, as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we will do the scheduled hearing. And Kevin, would you speak to us about the first one? Special assessments for unpaid weed and grass mowing.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. We have called a hearing tonight to review and accept any comments from the listed property owners that you have before you. These are properties, their parcel number listed and their address, that have been notified throughout August 1st, 2012, through July 31st, 2013, to have their property mowed when it exceeded the ordinance threshold. The bill was sent to these people, and they have not been paid. Tonight's hearing is to take testimony from any of these property owners of why they object to this assessment. Subsequent to that, it is staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution certifying each of these properties as listed for collection on their taxes in the year 2014.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing to the public. If there are anybody that has any comments or questions or whatever. Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open it to the council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I move we adopt a resolution certifying the amount of unpaid weed and grass mowing charges to the county auditor for collection in 2014.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt a resolution certifying the amount of unpaid weed and grass mowing charges to the county auditor for collection in 2014. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. We have another public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing for that one. At this point, Kevin, would you like to explain that one to us?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. You have before you one property listed for failure to pay the city when garbage was removed from the property as so ordered from our compliance division. The notice for the cost of the garbage was sent to them. The bill was not paid. Subsequent to taking testimony tonight, it is staff's recommendation that the dollar amount listed against the property so listed be certified for collection from the county auditor in the year 2014.
Thank you. The hearing has been opened. Is there anyone to speak to that? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and open it for discussion amongst the council. Councilman Ammon?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution certifying the amount of unpaid garbage removal charges of $402.50 to the county auditor for collection in 2014.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt a resolution certifying the amount of unpaid garbage removal charges which come to $402.50 to the county auditor for collection in 2014. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. We'll move right into the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. And I have two people that have signed up to speak, and that would be... Is it Mrs. Betty Knudsen?
As you said, my name is Betty Knudsen, and I live at 722 Second Street Southwest here in Wilmer. The minutes... The notes I'm going to mention right now is to the council because I am a concerned citizen of Wilmer. I've been a resident of Wilmer since September of 2002, and it's been a wonderful place to live. I'm talking in response to the comments made in the West Central Tribune recently. I would publicly like to thank the writers. Wilmer does have a problem. Those who do not see it must be wearing colored glasses. The squabbles on the council does not help the image of Wilmer, such as "Don't enter my space." We don't have a problem. In the past, we did it this way: private political advisors, secret meetings behind closed doors. Let's not put laws changes in the West Central Tribune, only the Internet. Is that because the West Central Tribune didn't endorse you? Not everyone has a computer. Source it out, and maybe we won't have to take the responsibility for it. Maybe you should read Sam Walton's book and see what he says about taking responsibility. Cutting out training and certification, does that mean that you'll be doing the training and micromanaging the staff? It seems to me that this would take steps backwards for Wilmer, not forward into the future. Are you in over your head? Say it. Don't cop out and saying, "I'm just a country boy." What do women know? You'd be surprised to what women know. Think you're better than the professionals that you hire? You just threw away $25,000. You ask, when are you going to tell me? It seems to me this shows how immature some of you are. If you were in the corporate world, most of you would have been fired long ago. The future of Wilmer is in your hands, I'm sadly to say. You hired good people, such as Charlene, but it seems you fight her all the time. Put the good old boys club to bed. This is a changing world. Do you take time to thank your employees, or are they just overpaid workers in your mind? The new superintendent of the Air Force Academy, I hate to tell you, was a woman. And Lieutenant General Michelle Johnson said... This is the... She is the first woman in that position, and she said change is something that needs to happen, and not everybody is happy about change. For the future of Wilmer, please put aside your own agendas and squabbles and work together for a better Wilmer. You can't create the future by clinging to the past. Let's stop the comedy show. This is what many in this community call the council meeting broadcast. As one of you council says, what you see is what you get. Do you want Wilmer to be a comedy show in the butt of a lot of jokes? I don't think so. And don't do the blame game. You are each responsible for your own actions. Just remember, you are accountable to the residents of Wilmer. I know that none of the words that I've meant tonight will make an impact, but I hope it might start you thinking about the problems you have on this council. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Susan Quist. Would you like to identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Sue Quist, and for the past 27 years, our family has resided and paid taxes on our home at 1451 Hanson Drive Southwest. Though I strongly dislike public speaking, my genuine concern for our community, its people, and our democratic process brought me to this very uncomfortable piece of equipment called a microphone. First of all, let me extend my appreciation to our mayor and each city council member for your willingness to serve. I believe you all do the best you can with your individual abilities, experience, and motivation. It's a huge commitment. Lots of time and energy is spent attending various community, committee, and council meetings. I would also like to extend my appreciation to your families because they sacrifice you so you can serve us. But second, as a person who embraces and is known for speaking the truth, I accepted an invitation by Kathy Schwantus and Mike Dolber to watch the August 20th city council meeting for myself. And unlike them, the West Central Tribune, Marv Calvin, Doug Allen, and former councilman Steve Gardner, who wrote the letters to the editor, and the woman who just spoke before me, I was pleased. I was pleased with Councilman Ron Christensen's motion, the discussion, the majorities... And let me stress, the majorities vote. And most of all, the reasons that supported the outcome. You made the right decision to move ahead, not forward. And how right you were is becoming more evident to me, especially the city's need for a human resource director. Since Thursday, I have been researching, and I found two articles from the Aberdeen News dated January 15th and 24th of 2009. The city of Aberdeen, South Dakota, hired an executive search firm to be in charge of the search for a city manager. Now listen closely. The Brymeier Group listed our current city administrator, Charlene Stevens, as one of the bi-finalists. In fact, or I'm going to probably pronounce her first name wrong, Arena Fersman of the Brymeier Group is quoted in one of the articles. No matter what the justification may be now offered, Brymeier Fersman, the consultants that the moving Wilmer four grifted money to and the city of Wilmer taxpayer paid towards that organizational study, should have disclosed that there was a previous connection with our city administrator. And Ms. Stevens also should have disclosed the relationship to her boss, us, the residents and taxpayers of Wilmer, her supervisors, the mayor and our council, and her coworkers, the city employees. No excuses seem acceptable to me in this conflict of interest. In further browsing the web, it was also disheartening to discover that Ms. Stevens' previous employer, Sedgwick County of Kansas, is still dealing with the ramifications from the budget deficit of $17 million. 400 jobs out of 3,000 were eliminated, including Ms. Stevens' position as the first of two assistant county managers. What was even more disturbing is that Sedgwick County's organizational plan looks very similar to the one that was presented in the Brymeier-Fersman's organizational study. But slight differences may be due to Sedgwick having a greater population. The 2,000 U.S. census states Sedgwick have having 470,809 people, whereas the city Wilmer sign on Highway 12 states a population of 19,610. Where Sedgwick County had 3,000 employees, Wilmer has about 100. Our community, its residents, taxpayers, and employees cannot risk this type of management. So inclusion, thank you. Thank you for doing what was right and what was best for the majority, not just the loud minority. And please keep asking the tough questions and weighing the pros and cons before you set policy. It is not micromanaging. It's accountability to your employer, the good people of Wilmer. So thank you. And that's all I had written before I came. But before I printed out my few words, I received on my computer... I always get updates from the West Central Tribune. And the headline reads Candy County Sends Letter to Wilmer, Minnesota Officials Encouraging Cooperative Steps Forward. Wonderful. My only concern, and I'm sure the county commissioners are listening as well, Commissioner Manson... I wish I had my glasses for this. ...made the comment. He felt compelled to write the letter after the Wilmer City's Council split decision last month not to move forward with a reorganizational plan. He says, "Let's put aside any preconceived notion. Let's put aside any baggage. Let's put aside any attitudes." Well, I think the first perceived notion that the commissioners have to realize is that was the right decision, the majority rules, and not only on the council, but the people of Wilmer. And again, thank you for what you were doing was right.
Thank you. I think that is all that we have for the open forum. We'll move into the Labor Relations Committee report for August 21st. Councilman Ammon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met Wednesday, August 21st, in the conference room one. Those present were myself, Jim Docken, Dennis Anderson, Ron Christensen, and Charlene Stevens. Others present were Mayor Frank Yanis, councilmembers DeBlick, councilmember Nelson and Johnson, Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson, David Little of the Western Tribune, and attorney Frank Madden via conference call. We called the meeting to order. There were no public comments. Item three was to close the session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategies. Motion was made and seconded to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiation strategies. The motion carried, and the meeting was closed at 4:48. And councilmembers DeBlick and Nelson left the room, as did Frank Yanis and David Little. The fire chief was not yet present. We opened the meeting at 5:31. Councilmember Johnson left the meeting, as did Mayor Yanis, and councilmembers Nelson and DeBlick rejoined the meeting, as did the fire chief Hendrickson. Item number five is a consideration request to increase the number of paid on-call firefighters. Our fire chief presented the committee with information regarding the current staffing of the fire department, as well as the total calls and response time. Chief Hendrickson discussed the challenges of staffing, volunteer department, as well as potential retirements in the next two to three years. Chief Hendrickson proposed increasing the allowed roster from the current 35 to 40 firefighters. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee to increase the number of paid on-call firefighters from 35 to 40. And that motion carried and like to move the recommendation of the committee. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to... By the council members to approve the recommendation of the committee to increase the number of paid on-call firefighters from 35 to 40. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Could I have... Would it be all right if I had the fire chief explain the response time and what's happening briefly to the committee?
Sure. Maybe that would be good.
Mayor Yanis and councilmembers, there's a piece of paper that was in your packet for today. It talks about response times. Since 2006, it shows 313 calls all the way to today of about 318 and a few in-between of ups and downs as far as the number of calls. The key part of the chart that I provided was to talk about response times. Since 2006, we started to respond or track out the door, so meaning the fire truck is leaving the fire hall within 4 minutes and 13 seconds in 2006. It steadily increased over time to 2012 to 4 minutes and 55 seconds. The key to that is, is fire doubles in size every 18 seconds. We're used to dealing with man-made products, cotton fibers and such from the past, and now it's more of plastic-based materials which inhibits, or excuse me, expands and makes fire double in size a lot more quickly. So therefore, when we talk about the request for additional firefighters, as tying it all together, we need more people to do, provide the same level of service to the community that we do today, based upon families, job requirements, and any other things that might come into play into our firefighters' lives. We're tertiary at best on a daily basis for fire response. 4 minutes and 55 seconds in 2012 is still a very, very respectable and a good response time. I come from the metro, paid-on-call department, 6 minutes and 30 seconds. And we're talking, you know, that's usually on an average. So we're well ahead of that. I'm just talking about trends that we see.
Thank you for that explanation and information. I have a know the fire department's always had a good response time, and I just hope it continues with these new firefighters.
Is there any further discussion? And that's the motion?
Stand your motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number six was consideration request to fill the vacancy of operator. Ms. Stevens presented the request to fill the vacancy created by the promotion in the Public Works Department. She also stated that the two internal promotions have occurred for public works superintendent as well as working foreman, resulting in a vacancy for an operator. Ms. Stevens recommended the position to be filled in order to fully staff the department. After discussion, a motion was made and seconded to fill the vacancy of operator in Public Works. I'll move the recommendation to committee. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to fill the vacancy of the operator in Public Works. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Number seven... Item number seven was the organizational study from the council special session. We enquired about advertising positions approved by the council at the recent special session. Ms. Stevens responded that the advertisements for public works director slash city engineer and engineering technician slash surveyor were ready to go, and the position of assistant engineer would wait until the filling of the director position. I also inquired as to the status of the planning retreat. Ms. Stevens stated that the council needs to better define the purpose and goals of retreat before one could be scheduled for a facilitator being considered. The committee agreed to have further discussion on the purpose and goals of a retreat, and this matter was for information only. Item number eight, discussion of preparation of council and committee agendas. I asked or raised questions regarding the timeframe for preparation of agendas and supporting materials and placing items on the agenda. It was suggested that perhaps to test sending out agenda materials for committees earlier as part of the electronic agenda and determine if that provides more opportunity for review in advance of the meetings. This also was for information only. Future agenda items, a request to contract... A request and review of the contract with the Convention Visitors Bureau and the director be reviewed at a future date. Also, councilmember Anderson asked the committee to consider a policy to address individuals serving on boards and commissions. That'll be in the next future meeting. Also, councilmember Christensen stated that the goals and objectives for the city administrator need to be finalized. There may be no further business. We adjourned at 6:35 PM. And I'll move to file the minutes. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for August 21st, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We will have the Public Works... I'm sorry, the Finance Committee report for August 26, 2013. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was public comment, and Mr. John Sullivan expressed the opinion that a council planning retreat would not accomplish anything because council members can't agree to disagree. Second item was... Had to do with some tax forfeited property. Staff explained to us that the city was notified about a parcel located within city limits that has been forfeited to the state of Minnesota for non-payment of property taxes. The county has appraised the value of this property at $3,000. Per Minnesota Statute 282.01, Candy High County is requiring the city to either approve the parcel for public auction or request a conveyance to the city for public use. This is a small corner lot that has no public use. Therefore, staff is not recommending conveyance to the city. After some discussion, it was determined that further information should be brought back to us, things including the exact address, whether or not the property has been sold, and outstanding amount of back taxes. So at this point, we took that for information only, and that will come back to the committee. The third item, as a leisure services budget. Staff explained to us that the local Disc Golf Club has requested that the city install an additional nine holes of Disc Golf plus a practice hole. The project cost is estimated at $2,859.89. The Disc Golf Club would like to make a donation in the amount of $1,224.35 to the city of Wilmer to help offset these costs. Staff is requesting an increase in the 2013 leisure services budget by $1,224.35 in both donations revenue and supplies expenditures. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to accept the donation of $1,224.35 from the Disc Golf Club and to increase the 2013 leisure services budget by the amount in both donations revenue and supply expenditures.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to accept the donation of $1,224.35 from the Disc Golf Club and to increase the 2013 leisure services budget by this amount in both donations revenue and supplies expenditures. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion to also add a letter of thank you and a letter of support from the city council, the mayor, or staff to the group for their work.
I'll second that.
Yeah. We have a second and a motion and a second to send a letter of thank you from the mayor and the city council and the city staff for the donation made by the...
The Disc Golf.
Disc Golf Club. Disc Golf Club.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
You need to vote on the amendment first, and then you can vote on the amended motion.
Okay. The amendment is a motion, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? That motion carries. And the
Now it's a roll call resolution.
The roll call of the resolution that I just read was, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
The fourth item was the 2014 mayor's proposed budget with some memos on budget cut impacts, and this is all going to be for information at this time. Mayor Yanish is proposing reductions in budgeted expenditures for 2014. Three of the areas include reductions in travel and training of 50 percent, membership and dues in the amount of 35 percent, and professional services also 35 percent. Committee members raised questions regarding the methodology used for cutting these areas. The mayor wants these cuts to be across the board. Committee members requested staff compile detail of the 2013 budget, the 2013 actual expenditures to date, and the 2012 actual expenditures for travel and training, membership and dues, and professional services, along with the anticipated 2014 expenditures, noting whether they are mandatory or only beneficial for productivity. The committee will continue to review and discuss the proposed 2014 budget over the next several meetings prior to the public hearing, which will be held December 2013. So this, at this point, was for information only. We'll have a lot more discussion on that topic. The next item was the proposed budget and the proposed levy. Staff reviewed with us the tax levy included in the mayor's proposed 2014 budget. Due to levy limit law being reinstated in 2013 for the 2014 tax year, the levy cannot be raised over the 2013 levy. The levy proposed is $4,139,734. It may be lowered but cannot be raised after certification to the county auditor's office. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution setting the preliminary 2014 City of Wilmer property tax levy at $4,139,734 and scheduling the public hearing on the 2014 proposed budget for December 2nd, 2013.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution setting the preliminary 2014 City of Wilmer property tax levy at $4,139,734 and scheduling the public hearing on the 2014 proposed budget for December 2nd, 2013. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Fifth item was some reports. We reviewed the second quarter Community Foundation Report and the July 2013 Rice Trust Report. That was for information only. There was no old business, and there was no new business. So unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for August 26th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? That motion carries. Moving to the Public Works Safety Committee report for August 27th, 2013. Councilman Nelson.
Christiansen.
Christiansen.
I will defer to the vice chair, as she was there and now is absent.
Absolutely.
These are the minutes from the meeting on August 27th of the Public Works Safety. It was called to order at 4:45 by vice chair Audrey Nelson at the city office building. Members present were council members Bruce DeBleek, Steve Amen, and Tim Johnson, substituting for Ron Christiansen. Also present were Bruce Peterson, Planning and Development Services Director, Dave Weifels, Police Chief, David Little, West Central Tribune, and Janelle Summers, the Recording Secretary. Item number one was public comment, and David Little commented on how well the construction of the Trot Avenue Quiet Zone had turned out. Item number two was a continuation of the Dangerous Weapons Ordinance. The Dangerous Weapons Ordinance was referred back to the committee by the council from the hearing. Chief Weifels researched ordinances of other cities similar to Wilmer and found a variety of ways to regulate the issue of archery shooting. The committee reviewed the wording of several ordinances and favored what was used by the City of Hutchinson. Specifically, it is unlawful for any person to shoot a bow and arrow except in the physical education program in a school supervised by a member of its faculty, a community-wide supervised class, or in events specifically authorized by the chief of police, or a bow and arrow range authorized by the council. The committee also discussed possible locations to develop an approved archery range, such as the former wastewater treatment plant, with the inclusion of archery groups in the development of the site. Chief Weifels stated that city attorney Robert Scott is requesting the word "embrace" be changed to "prohibit" in Sections 10-54 CND. A motion was made by council member DeBleek, seconded by council member Amen, and passed for the following recommendation: to send the ordinance back to staff to draft wording similar to that used by the City of Hutchinson, having the word "embrace" changed to "prohibit" in Sections 10-54 CND, and bring this sample ordinance back to committee for further review.
Second. Is there a motion and a second to send the ordinance back to staff to draft wording similar to that used by the City of Hutchinson, have the word "embrace" changed to "prohibit" in Sections 10-54 CND, and bring the sample ordinance back to the committee for further review? Is there any discussion on that?
Just clarification, I know we talked about at the committee whether we needed to have this actually be a motion, or if it was just the committee's instruction to go back, so.
Is it a motion?
I'm not sure if we need one.
Go with it now.
Go with it? Okay. So then I will have made that motion, okay?
And then we'll second by Mr. DeBleek, our councilman DeBleek. Did you have a question, councilman?
No, I was just going to question the need for it, but we're good.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
Okay. Item number three, Midwest Lift Station Lakeland Drive Sanitary Sewer Project update. This is for information only. Acting Public Works Director Peterson updated the committee on the Midwest Lift Station Lakeland Drive Sanitary Sewer Project. Staff continues to meet with the design consultants on the project. The lift station design is going well and should be completed in time to include it in the Northern Lee Forest main in the 2014 projects. In summary, the original cost estimates for replacing the sanitary sewer along Lakeland Drive and reconstructing the roadway became significantly higher than anticipated. Staff and the consultant evaluated just what the needs to, what needs to be completed at this time by entering into a contract to televise the sanitary sewer line. The overall condition of the line viewed through televising indicated it is in reasonable good condition, except for several impediments they are proposing to be removed by cleaning. If that is successful, the line would not need to be replaced in its entirety. There would then be no need to proceed with the complete reconstruction of Lakeland Drive, and an overlay would be considered deferring the complete reconstruction. The plans will continue for the trail and quiet zone construction, along with possible lane change improvements on Lakeland Drive from high to trot avenues to improve traffic flow. This matter was for information only. Item number four, Sewer Credits Report. This is for information only also. The staff recently met with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Personnel to discuss sewer credits for particularly large users of water that do not return proportionate amounts to the sanitary system due to the processes involved in their businesses. Examples given were Jay's Bait, Candy High Bottled Water, and several irrigators. It was noted that sprinkler use in the summer months is already built into the rate structure, as during the summer months, consumers are charged for their sewer based on the average of their winter months. The committee discussed this matter, and it was the consensus that a policy for staff to use to formulate credits should be developed in the future, possibly once a city engineer is on staff. Item number five is for information only also, and that's effluent credits report. City staff met with representatives of Donahue and Associates to discuss the matter of effluent credits for phosphorus only. The city could sell credits to other cities within the watershed since the current plant is discharging water that is substantially below the maximum amount. Wilmer is at a disadvantage, though, because the city is so far up the Minnesota River Basin watershed. Cities seeking credits would have to be further up. The committee felt that the sale of effluent credits would be risky as future compliance limits are unknown, and no action was taken. On item number six, under old business, Chief Weifels reported that the jail census was at eighty-seven, and the report of calls for the past two weeks was eight hundred and thirty-two. Item number seven, new business. Chief Weifels informed the committee he was contacted by a citizen with concerns for the pedestrian traffic that crosses Wilmer Avenue in the vicinity of the football field at Kennedy School. He requested permission to pursue purchase of two foldable type standards, three feet high by two feet wide, to place at Tenth Street and seven and a half streets on the center line to alert traffic. The committee concurred with the purchase. Councilmember Amen brought up the information, brought up information on chemicals that may be purchased to clean the downtown sidewalks, and also mentioned the Garfield Neighborhood Watch Group and the potential promotion of more groups throughout the city. Councilmember DeBleek questioned staff on the report of lead contaminants in the gun range in the city auditorium. Staff reported more information will be brought forward in the near future, including cost estimates for abatement and air handling, but until then, the range will be closed. There was no further business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:05. And if there aren't any questions, I'll enter them, those minutes for motion for approval.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded for the approval of the Public Works Safety Committee report for August 27th, 2013. Is there any discussion? I have two questions for Chief Weifels, if you would, if I like. Chief, is that pretty much standard on old business on number six? Reported census at eighty-seven, and the calls, two weeks, at eight hundred and thirty-two? Is that pretty standard?
Depends what you want to compare the standard to. Last year's calls at the same time of the year, the month before, it varies. Our call load increases throughout the summer, as might be expected, and decreases normally in the winter months, and also the types of calls. So I guess for clarification, I would ask what numbers you want me to compare it to?
Compared to last year, the same month?
Then it is standard.
It is standard, pretty standard. Thank you. And the second question I have was about the concerns with the pedestrian traffic crossing Wilmer Avenue in the vicinity of the football field at Kennedy School. Now, doesn't that have to go through some type of a procedure to get that done, to accept that as a donation, or how would we do that?
I'm not familiar with any donation. Quite frankly, I was, I didn't really approach the committee asking for permission. I came to inform them that a citizen expressed concern of people crossing Wilmer Avenue when it's dark, when the football games start at night, and was wondering if some type of sign or warning system could be put in place to alert motorists that there are people crossing the street, whether it's kids darting across ahead of their parents, or people that are crossing in the dark and being unseen. It was felt that the purchase of a couple foldable pedestrian caution signs placed in advance of the area where they would normally cross on Wilmer Avenue to get to the football field, coming from the church parking lot, would be beneficial and safe for our citizens. So I brought it in as information, but it appears to have come through as a request for permission to purchase.
Okay, permission to purchase would be the citizen?
Yeah, a safety sign. Normally, it's something I would just take out of the budget anyway, being that it would be good for the community.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Councilman Amen?
One question on the minutes. Item number three, the Midwest Lift Station. The last paragraph, plans will continue for the trail and quiet zone construction, along with possible lane change improvements on Lakeland Drive from high to trot avenues to improve the traffic flow. Maybe I was misunderstood this, but weren't we attempting to consider the entire Lakeland Drive Avenue from Highway 12 and south on Lakeland Drive also for a traffic flow, or is that going to be future, future plans when we reconstruct that street or overlay it?
At this point, council member, we're looking at that as a future plan. You know, what began this project was really the Midwest Lift Station.
Right.
It expanded into a much larger project with the full street reconstruction and reconfiguration that has since become a project we don't think is a necessary in terms of replacing the interceptor. We still believe we have capacity and that we can be necessarily afford, and so we've kind of scaled that project back. The Highway 12, that will look at Lakeland and Highway 12, but that would be a future. So we're looking at some, at a fewer improvements to Lakeland Drive at this point with the capacity.
Thank you. I guess my concern is, I drive on Lakeland Drive a lot, and I notice there's a lot of traffic from Trot Avenue. There's a lot of oncoming traffic both directions, and I'm just curious if that road should be a three-lane or a left-turn lane in the middle in some of those areas, because we have traffic backed up for quite a while, especially in the winter months, and then people park on one side of the road, and there's barely enough room to get by. So I just wonder if that, when that can be improved, that we should also continue it further to the south, so people that are taking a left-turn lane to their property on the east side can drive on the west side without, which is not really a passing lane, but it's barely wide enough to get a vehicle by there. And I've seen some close incidences, there were people trying to divert and go around people heading south that turn off and go to the side there. So I'm just concerned about that. I don't know, that can be addressed later, but.
But we can take a look at that. Appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? That motion carries. Is there any old business to discuss? Under new business, we have councilman Amen, did you have?
Oh, new business?
New business?
Oh, just for your information, we had a meeting, I had Beth Fisher from the Convention Visitors Bureau meet with Steve Breziden and one of his workers. Audrey was there, she's on the Community Park and Rec Board, and the issue was the outdoor archer range, as I mentioned at the previous meeting. I thought I'd just move forward a little bit with it and get a consensus to see if there's interest, and there definitely is a lot of interest, very enthused group of archers out there to have a archer range in the City of Wilmer. And it was good to see that excitement, especially from Mr. Wondersee's son, who was twelve years old, but he could pull a forty-two-pound bow, and he was pretty proud of that. So I think there's some movement forward. I have distributed amongst you, Ann Charlene, some emails that were sent back and forth with spots and some planning stages, and also some emails from Mr. Breziden regarding site possible, other site locations, and I just wanted to keep the council abreast that, that there is interest, and it could be a great community project with the potential to have maybe even archery, state archery competition here. It could bring in up five hundred people for two days. So it sounds interesting, and we're going to pursue it. I just thought I'd get the information out there too, so nobody's surprised.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, perhaps, we could ask Mr. Breziden to speak. He had some good comments at our meeting the other day about the park plan and kind of how things are working with that.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, we indeed meet and discussed an archery range, and part of that discussion was the overall park plan and the fact that our department and the City of Wilmer is right in the midst of a park study, a park plan, moving forward with Mid-Minnesota Development Commission. So prior to any other work on an archery range or any other park development thoughts at this time, i.e. Rice Park and the waiting pool, those types of things have what, is what has stirred. what has stirred our interest in creating a park plan so that we can have a document that leads us forward, so we're not picking projects out of the air. We're sticking to a capital plan, we're sticking to a five-year plan, we're sticking to a ten-year plan, we're sticking to a fifteen-year plan regarding the maintenance and development of our park systems. So although we did have a good meeting, and I think some progress was made, everybody at the meeting also agreed that the park plan is where our focus needs to be and how we're going to continue to move forward is to complete that park plan. And the public could help us with that park plan, as we're in the midst of a survey. So if you go on the city's website or the Community Health and Rec website, there is a link to a survey that we're trying to get community members to fill out to give us information on what they think of our parks, how safe they think our parks are, what's the equipment in the parks like, those types of upgrades and enhancements that they'd like us to do. So that's where we're at right now related to the park plan and moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Anderson, did you have some comments to make?
No.
Okay. Councilman Christensen?
Yes, I do. I'm going to pass these down to Kevin, please. Our previous administrator had a policy, an unwritten policy with the council that expenditures, money spent in the capital improvement program and for the vehicle slash equipment replacement program would go through proper committees and then go to the full council for approval. We haven't had that for the last two years. Not many of us are aware of what's being spent in the capital improvement program, over seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars done this year. Therefore, I thought we should have a formal written policy, and therefore, I move that we, the city council, adopt a formal written policy that states all expenditures over ten thousand dollars in the vehicle slash equipment replacement program and the capital improvement program be presented to the appropriate committee, and that these expenditures then go to the full council for approval prior to any checks being issued for items in the vehicle slash equipment replacement program or the capital improvement program.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Would you like to read that back to us, Kevin?
Mr. Christiansen moves that the Wilmer City Council adopt a formal written policy that states all expenditures over ten thousand dollars in the vehicle, equipment replacement program, and the capital improvement program be presented to the appropriate committee, and that these expenditures then go to the full council for approval prior to any checks being issued for items in the vehicle, equipment replacement program, or the capital improvement program.
Over ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand dollar threshold, yes, sir.
Okay, is that a motion or roll call?
Standard main motion. Your roll call is your option.
Discussion? Councilman Anderson?
I'm a little bit concerned, a little bit upset. I don't like the process of bringing a motion to the full council when it hasn't gone through committee. We've talked about that, we've talked about that, and I thought we agreed that's what we were going to do. And further, I thought we had agreed we were going to talk about this as the budget moved forward. The concept may be fine, but I totally object to the method that this is being brought forth in.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think we did have a conversation about this at a committee meeting. I had asked for clarification of what the actual policy was, and I thought we were going to have this discussion in budgeting, when we talk about budget. I believe if I understand correctly, the capital improvements plan is approved by the council as part of that budget process. And if there's thresholds or things that need to be put into that, that would be the appropriate time to do that. I have no idea why the ten thousand dollars, and I guess I would like to see us have a further discussion and a review of what the capital improvements plan is. And if it's, it's also my understanding that I don't think there's anything different now than there was before, because I have asked about that with the previous administrator.
Mayor, would you put that under finance?
I think it's part of finance. It's part of the budget. And we did have this discussion in a committee meeting, and I think that committee did discuss bringing it to the budget, bringing it to finance.
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was discussed at the Public Works Public Safety meeting. I think it was over a month ago, and it never did go to the budget meeting we had here. And I don't think it's inappropriate at all to make a motion here. I mean, there's many times we come to a meeting, we have stuff thrown in front of us that we have to act on. I see there's a couple tonight. This is no surprise to anybody. We've been doing this for, since I've been on the council, eighteen years. We've been aware of what's been spent, and most of it goes through Public Works. I mean, a new street sweeper, new trucks, new plows, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I knew nothing about it. The five-year plan that Councilor Nelson refers to is a five-year capital improvement plan. However, it's a wish list, folks. If you look at the one for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen budget, there's hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars in there to be spent. We need to know about it before they're spent, and they need to come to the council for a final approval. There's two hundred thousand dollars each year for the next five years in the gateway to Wilmer. That's a million dollars. Anybody see that in there? So at our next budget meeting, we're going to go item by item, all eight of those pages for the next five years, and cut out what we don't want passed if we're not going to, if they're not going to go buy us and have us approve it. I mean, that capital improvement program is a wish list. It's, the fartament wants a new truck, the Public Works wants a new blade, finance wants a new computer system. That doesn't mean that we're approving them for five years. That's not what I, that's not what I get when we have a five-year capital improvement program. Those expenditures need to go through the council, and they all did when we hit, our previous administrator brought them each to the appropriate committee, and we discussed them, went to the full council. We said, yes, go ahead and buy the truck. I don't think we ever said no, except on one occasion that I recall. So I think it's very appropriate, and I'm a little bit peeved that we have not been appraised of what's been spent here this past year, seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars up to October first. And we're the elected officials here. We need to be, we need to know what's going on. I drive down the road, and somebody says, look, we got a new vehicle over here, and I'm going, I know nothing about it, and I'm the chair of the Public Works Public Safety Committee. So yes, I speak in favor of this, and I think we need to pass this motion.
Councilman Anderson?
Regarding, looking at the five-year capital improvement plan, you've gotten a little bit ahead of me, but I'll tell you now, we are planning a council work session on September thirtieth, and that is one of two agenda items. So we are going to be talking about that. And it's a little surprising to me that we don't know what's purchased. We get minutes, and we get a review of every dollar that was spent. Every dollar is listed in the packet that we get. So we do know. I'm certainly willing to talk further about this, but I still don't like this coming at us at a council, and I'm going to vote against it.
Mr. DeBleek?
Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah, a little surprised why this is coming up now. I think we're right in the middle of the budget process. All these items Councilman Christiansen are talking about are in the budget, discussed at that time. The five-year capital improvement program is just a recommendation that is, comes from the, comes to us, and what shows all the capital improvements that are scheduled over the next five years for the city. They may or may not be funded or placed in the finance committee, in the budget for funding. I, I think Member Anderson is right. This is being discussed in the finance committee, and I see no reason why it's being brought up right now. So I'll make a motion to table it, and just to table it.
Second. We have a motion on the table, don't we?
A table, a motion to table overrides that. It's non-debatable.
Okay.
You must deal with it first, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to table the request by Councilman Christiansen on his motion. And all those in favor say aye. Is there any discussion, first of all?
Can't discuss it, Mr. Mayor?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Four-three.
Four-three.
So it failed. You can continue discussion on the original motion.
Mayor Yanish?
Yes.
I would still seek clarification for the five-year capital improvements plan. It's reviewed every year, and I hate to say that it would be a wish list, and I was wondering if staff could address, by the time it gets to be what we need to do next year, it's still approved in that process. And so just clarification of how this works its way down the five years.
It is correct. We've developed, we started last year trying to develop a five-year capital improvements plan, and each year, that capital plan is updated for the current year. So what was proposed for two thousand thirteen, and what was approved by the council for two thousand thirteen is what is being, those are the projects that are occurring in two thousand thirteen. As we go through the budget process for two thousand fourteen, we update for two thousand fourteen, and then five years, and then an additional four years. What the council approves as part of the two thousand fourteen budget process will be the two thousand fourteen projects, and then those projects go through the appropriate bidding process and such.
Okay, so the council does approve them in the budgeting process as for the year, not as a...
Correct, and in last year's capital improvement, or last year's budget process, we reviewed each of the projects for two thousand thirteen at one of the council work sessions. And the reason behind the additional five years is to give the council a look at what we believe is coming in those years and trying to fund. But sometimes priorities do shift. A project that is scheduled for two thousand fifteen may either have a greater sense of urgency, it may be a project that we felt could, you know, if it's a facility repair, for example, a facility matter, maybe an HVAC system that we think can go another year, something may occur that makes us try to move it forward, because either we don't believe it can last, or the priorities have shifted with other projects, or something that we have to shift out because we just can't afford it with all of the other projects. And so we go through that prioritization each and every year for the current year, still trying, and then still trying to look out an additional four years so that we can understand what our financing needs are going to be.
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was mentioned that, you know, the council, you know, does see all these expenditures come through us. You know, there's six, seven, eight pages tonight of all the checks that were made last month. We find out after it's purchased. We don't find out before it's purchased. It's after it's purchased. If that's your idea of transparency, I beg your pardon. That is not being transparent with us or the citizens of this community. They need to know what's spent, we more than them. We don't find out till the check after it's purchased. We don't find out. I don't know why someone would be against this when we practiced this for eighteen years that I was on the council and the rest of us here. Our former administrator made a point of bringing all of these to every appropriate committee whenever dollars were going to be expended. I don't see anything, what's wrong with it? I just, I can't see the negative side of it. I, this is just because I made, because I came up with the idea, you know? Don't be the messenger.
If I understand this right, everything under ten thousand dollars would be free and clear, right? They could make that decision?
Not free and clear. It would be paying for them, but that could be made by the administrator, yeah.
Mayor Yanish?
Yes.
Just a clarification on what the process would be, because we're approving them in the capital improvement plan, and so the staff is going to say, we're going to purchase a car in March. So you approved that in December for the budget, okay? So if they're going to approve it in March, do we, do they start bringing it to, or they need the car in March, they start bringing it to us in January for us to review one more time? Then they go get the bids, and then they bring it back, and we approve it one more time? Or why are we approving it on the capital improvement plan if we don't trust the staff to go out and fulfill what we're approving? I still think it belongs back in that, in that beginning process. If there's questions, then don't approve it in the capital improvement plan. I don't understand why, you know, why ten thousand, and why not go down to five or two or every check?
You can amend it.
I don't know. I think that's what you have staff for, and that's what you hire staff is, is to work within the budget guidelines.
Councilman Christiansen, did you have another comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we're going through the budget process right now, so the five-year capital improvement program is for fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And I've been reading that for, well, when we started the process, two months ago, and I, right now, can't tell you five things that are on the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen capital improvement program, except for the two hundred thousand dollars of gateway. I remember that because it stuck in my brain for the next five years. But I can't tell you what else. And we're supposed to approve that and then not know when it's spent next year? I mean, it's just common sense that, you know, when I spend money in my company, I don't just let my secretary write the check out and buy something because that last month, I think we should buy a new car. These are going to bring it to me, and I'm going to find out about it. This is just transparency. I, I don't get the negativism toward, I just don't get it.
Councilman Anderson?
It's about as transparent as it can be, but to your thought that we don't know what's in the two thousand fourteen, I agree. There's a lot of things in there. We're going to have a meeting with all of the council members on the twenty-ninth, thirtieth, whatever, that last Monday of the month, and we're going to talk about it then, and we can talk until we're blue in the face, and we add or subtract or do whatever. So it's not like this is a big secret. It's approved, we approve it. Staff should have the ability to just carry forth our wishes. I just don't understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Thank you. I think there's a merit to all the remarks that I've heard here tonight, but because it's a five-year plan, and even though we review it annually, I myself, I don't mind being reminded periodically about what we're purchasing. I don't always catch it when I look through the monthly expenditures, catch everything. I've looked at them many times and sometimes miss something because I get a question from somebody about a purchase the city's made, and I don't know anything about it yet, it was in the list when I go back and look a second time. So I'd at least like a reminder of what, you know, periodically as we go through on some of the major purchases. It just helps me get a feel of where we're at.
Counselor, am I allowed to get into this conversation?
Sure, Mayor. Do you have a question?
I do. You're in charge. I am wondering what the negative would be to having a ten thousand dollar maximum. Do you have a negative response to that, or a negative comment to that? I don't know what the negative would be to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just looked at the proposed two thousand fourteen capital improvement program. There are five items under ten thousand dollars. Everything else is over ten thousand dollars. When you start looking down these lists, aerial photography, emergency outdoor sirens, I mean, copy machine printer, then why, why don't we just approve everything except, instead of include five thousand? If we can't go through once a year and do a budget and justify why these items are needed in two thousand fourteen, then we shouldn't be approving a capital improvements budget. If we need to run month to month and make approvals, approval out of every single item, there's only five items that are less than ten thousand dollars. Then let's just do them all. Let's not, let's not pretend that we're going to do anything other than look at every single item the city is going to purchase that's a capital item, because that's what you're talking about doing.
Twenty thousand dollars. What happens if you move that to twenty thousand dollars?
I don't know. I really think this is a budget discussion. I have no problem looking over what we're doing, but I think we can, we can allow, make some decisions once a year on things that need to be done. If we don't have money and we don't have cash, then we shouldn't be buying it, and I believe staff would bring that to our attention. But these items are in the proposed budget for next year? Why, why are we doing this? Yes, we should, we can know about it, but it's, they shouldn't have to come and ask. We've got enough things to do. Our committee, our staff are so busy doing committee assignments, I, I'm not opposed to knowing what's going on, but we are getting the information. And to me, don't approve, then don't have a capital improvement plan if you, if you want to approve every single item. want to approve every single item. This is a budget process. This is not a, it's not a...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, it's all good discussion. And it's good to have lively discussion. There's pros and cons to everything. And I, I think this is the best place to carry on a conversation rather than having just back at the budget meeting because it's setting a policy for everybody to follow in the future. But just for everybody's information, and other council people that are more senior to me can recall too, that I think the reason why the policy or unwritten policy in the past was that all the specifications of the type of tires, the engine, and all that came through Public Works. We had a former, very diligent council person by the name of Richard Halterman, and he was, he worked for Mendot, and he knew his stuff, and he was sharp. And it was good and refreshing to get that perspective from him. And I think he wanted more or less collaborate with staff on making good decisions, and their decision is made on going and spending more money on a project or on a vehicle rather than spending less because it was a better value. And I think some things like that, times like that, we have the ability to maybe decipher that. Sometimes we don't. If Richard was on there, he'd probably, he'd probably fight for all the specifications going back through Public Works. I think this is just an understanding that the council has to be maybe more, a little more enlightened. And I have the copy of the 2013 proposed capital improvements and the 2014, and there's a large sum of money there. And it's not an issue about not trusting staff. I guess as our part-time jobs happen, we can't decipher all these, these issues. But I think what might be helpful in this process is if nothing else, get a detailed description of just what exactly, why, why is it needed for outdoor warning sirens? Well, that's a safety issue. And there's some things that are, that are pretty small, $5,000, a new roof on the WCAC, you know, who's making the recommendation for what reason and what's going to happen if it doesn't, what are the results if we don't take action on it? And what are the pros if we do? And is this proactive or not proactive? But if that was written down on, on these and explained somehow in a briefer form, we don't have to know every detail, but I think that would be more palatable to the council. We wouldn't maybe have to, as Audrey refers to, go through every little item. And it's not an issue of not trusting staff. I think it's more or less, I agree with Ron, that it's more or less trying to understand what's being spent and when it's being spent. So I think there's merit to both sides here on having the motion passed. It's not going to do us any harm. And if it's going to be really difficult on staff to provide that information, please let us know now.
Councilmember Nelson, do you have a question?
Mayor Yanis, if I understand correctly, in order for an item to get on this list, the very thing you just said takes place. Why do we need a new roof? Why do we need this? They don't just come on there because it's a wish list. Somebody's gone through this and done that. And if you want a description after each line item, that's fine. But either, either we shouldn't be improving it as a capital improvement program. You know, I just don't understand why we're making people repeat and repeat and repeat and repeat. I still think there is accountability, and that, it comes back to us. It's in this process of approving the budget. I just don't understand why, why we're going to go through this again and again and again and again.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is just a request for a council person or maybe a couple of people on the council to make them feel more comfortable in doing, in making decisions for the city and their taxpayers. It's not a big, it's not a big deal. Either way, if it's needed and the improvement's needed, we're going to make it. But I think it's just a comfort level, and I respect anybody that would come up here and want, if there was a motion that was going to make them feel more comfortable serving in the city council, I'm for it. You know, if that's their comfort level, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. My concern is how much more time it's going to take staff. But in the past, when I think most of us served, have served in Public Works, we got inundated with information. And it took a lot of reading. But at least you understood more of what was going on. So I don't see any, anything really terribly bad about this. I think it's just recognizing a individual or some individuals on clarification and more transparency of what's going on. I don't, I don't think it was that, that's a big of a deal.
This was for, just for discussion, as I understand?
The motion on the table?
No, sir. The motion is on the floor. It must be dealt with.
What is the motion?
I could read the whole thing again, but borderline, it's the preapproval of 10,000-plus capital expenditures prior to the checks being issued.
Is there any further discussion? Then this would be a motion.
It is your call, sir. It only requires a voice vote at this point.
Okay. Let's do a roll call. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Four ayes, three nays. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I have my second item to Mr. Fagerly.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The elected officials, we seven and the mayor, Mr. Dachan that's in the hospital presently, are directly responsible for the delivery of services in Wilmer, whether they be street sweeping, stop signs, Public Works, public safety, fire. And because of that, it, we need good, quality individuals in our department heads as supervisors and our confidential employees. Now, we're going to be hiring a Public Works director who will be an engineer and an assistant engineer, and maybe more down the road here as we go with the retirements. Therefore, I move that we, the Wilmer City Council, adopt a formal written policy that states the Labor Committee chairperson or his or her appointee from the Labor Committee be on every hiring committee involving the hiring of department heads, supervisors, and confidential employees, period.
Just for my own clarity, could you read that again, Councilman?
I move that we, the Wilmer City Council, adopt a formal written policy that states the Labor Committee chairperson or his or her appointee from the Labor Committee be on every hiring committee involving the hiring of department heads, supervisors, and confidential employees, period.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Could you read that back to us one more time, Kevin?
Mr. Christensen moves that the Wilmer City Council adopt a formal written policy that states the Labor Committee chairperson or his or her appointee from the Labor Committee be on every hiring committee involving the hiring of department heads, supervisors, and confidential employees.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Yanis? I would ask our city attorney to clarify because I believe that this discussion took place at the committee meeting and that we have an ordinance regarding the administrator's roles and responsibility along with contract. And I believe that that discussion took place as, as to what she is involved with and what, with that. So I'd seek clarification of that.
Mayor Yanis, Councilmember Nelson, there is an ordinance detailing the city administrator's duties and responsibilities. I have not reviewed that in advance of this motion, and I would hesitate to do so on the spot here. I could certainly take a look at it and get an opinion to you on if that would, if this motion is inconsistent with that ordinance provision. But having not had any notice or been requested a look at this, I'm not prepared to opine on it here.
Further discussion? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we talked about this briefly in, in the Labor Committee. Here again, why do we have committees if we're just going to bring everything up at the council meeting? I, I just think this is the wrong, the wrong avenue for that and the wrong venue. And I also don't see any point in having a council person being involved in all of that hiring. We've got to have some trust. And this is going down to trust. Everything we're doing has to do with personalities as opposed to policy. We've got to get back to looking at policy and not personalities. And let's, let's have faith and trust in the people that we've hired, and let's let them do their job. I, this, this is bad policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Thank you. How many department heads have we hired in the last five years? How many supervisors? How many confidential employees have we hired in the last five years? Somebody give me a number? So it isn't all these hiring people, okay? These are very special people. We, the council, are directly responsible for the delivery of services in this city. And if we can't have some say in who's going to be a department head, supervisor, or a confidential employee, then we don't need to be council people. We're directly related to the delivery of services in this city. And I want to make sure at least one person from the Labor Committee is on there, if not the chairperson. You know, it's one vote. I don't know how many are on the committee even. If there's five, six, seven, eight, I don't know. But it's, it's one person from the Labor Committee that had, it's like a liaison to a board or commission where he can come back to the council and rest assured that we've got four good individuals we're going to be looking at for hiring here. We're going to get a good one. Or just the opposite, we need to get more applications. There's, this is no magic again, and it's somewhat of a transparency to the council from the labor or the hiring committee. Again, I can't remember the last time we hired one of these individuals.
The fire chief.
Fire chief.
We had that discussion at the, at the committee meeting, Ron, just two weeks ago. We talked about the process. You asked, you talked about who was involved in the hiring of the fire, fire chief, okay? Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to table this until we have a chance to hear from our city attorney regarding whether we're exposing ourselves legally with this motion.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to table this discussion until we get a response from our city attorney as to whether or not the city could be liable for some issues if they proceed the way the Councilman and Christensen wants to proceed. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
You can't.
Not on the table, no. Right. I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
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 That passes.
That passes. Request a roll call. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
No.
Amen?
No.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Four, two, one abstention.
That passes.
And it passes to table, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could you give me clarification, Kevin, on what we just did? I know we tabled the issue until we get a response from?
Robert Scott, our city, our city attorney, I guess the nephew, Robert, regarding how this motion of yours affects, is affected by the ordinance that's on our books.
Okay. Then when we bring it back to the council, how many days do we have to do that? You know, you can only table it for so long.
So you can stay on the table forever?
I'm not much sure what the 30-day rule is. To remove it from the table. Well, I think we'll have to research the parliamentary procedure on that. We're not prepared to answer that.
Just want to make sure it doesn't get dropped off.
30 days on a resolution, I believe.
Tabling a motion stays on the table till someone takes it off the table.
Thank you.
It is in the resolution.
Do we have anybody else that has? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment, and I guess it'd be for the benefit of Mr. Scott. I believe you're already aware, but just in case you aren't, we already have a provision, I believe, in the city charter that provides that the hiring or discharge of department heads requires council approval.
That's correct.
So that takes care of a third of the problem.
Councilman DeBleek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to bring up, I had some calls, and I think you've received some, Councilman Anderson as well, about fairgrounds, noise and activities at the fairgrounds. I know we had some agreements with the, the Fair Board a number of years back about numbers of noise generating events out there and, and the like. I would wonder if we could put this in a committee about, discussion about, discussion about noise at the fairgrounds. And staff, if they can locate or find those minutes that we had from that, and at least put it on a committee agenda.
What committee would you recommend?
I would say probably Community Development.
Okay. We can do that.
It's in there minutes.
Did you have anything else, Councilman?
That's all I have.
I have a couple of things that I would like to bring. We need a vote on one thing. We need a approval. I'd like to appoint Kathy Schwantis to the Police Civil Service Commission. And I think we need a motion for that. Am I right?
That is correct.
Also move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Kathy Schwantis as a member to the Police Civil Service Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Abstain.
That motion carries. I'd also like to, I feel pretty good about this one, at least in the, the letter that I received from Mr. Harland Madison, Commissioner Harland Madison, County Board of Commissioners. He wrote this to Charlene Stevens, our city administrator, and if you don't mind, I'll read it to you. It's rather short. "On behalf of the Candy Ojai County Board of Commissioners, I am requesting that the Wilmer City Council appoint two council members along with you to serve," that would be Administrator Stevens, "to serve on a work group with two commissioners and county administrator Larry Clandell. The purpose of the work group would be to begin a formal process to explore and evaluate opportunities, both current and future, in which our local government units could more fully collaborate. The opportunities may range from joint purchasing and increased sharing of resources to combinations and consolidations. I am keenly aware of the divergent opinions represented by council members, and I therefore suggest that the members appointed represent each of the primary opinions on the council. I would also request that this work group present a progress update to each local government unit by the end of March 2014. We must examine and thoroughly evaluate the various opportunities to ensure the best value for our tax dollars, taxpayer dollars. All local governments are facing a changing workforce, retirements, increased costs, and demands coupled with stable to shrinking resources. Status quo and simply maintaining is not appropriate nor realistic in an ever-changing world. Our constituents deserve better than that, and we must forge ahead with resource discussion and good planning to position ourselves as a vibrant regional center for our future. Sincerely, Harland Madison, Chairman of the Candy Ojai County Board of Commissioners." Where have I heard that before? I think we've talked about that. We need no action on that tonight.
You're prepared to appoint? You can.
I think I'll wait until we
Think about it.
Can think about it, make a good decision. Councilman?
I have a question, and I think I need a clarification. This is looking at possibly making job combination, job changes and things like that. We just passed a motion a week ago, and we talked about it here briefly, that we're going to stay with the organizational chart that we have. How can we, and I think we should, but how, how do we get around the motion that we just made where we're not going to make any changes? I think we have a problem. I think we have a problem. I think we're going to have to look at that, and I would suggest that it go to committee to look at it and come up with some sort of a solution to that, because I think with the, with the motion that we passed, our workforce and our, our structure is set.
Counselman, if I can comment to that, I would like to, you know, to say that I don't think that the motion that we passed last week would be all-inclusive in not working with the county.
If I may, you know, if we make a consolidation or a combination or something like that, it's going to change our, our structure. I don't know, maybe, Mr. Scott?
Mayor Yanis, Councilmember Anderson, I believe that this is simply a policy matter of the council. You did take a vote at your last meeting to stick with the current organizational chart, but there's nothing to preclude the council from taking a different vote if it determines that's the direction it wants to go at a future meeting. I don't know that there's any preclusive effect to that vote you took that would prohibit you from looking at this again and changing your mind, essentially.
Okay, I'm all for it.
Now, I have a resolution that was dropped on my desk, but I don't know what it is. What I...
That was just a copy of the resolution for the proposed tax levy.
Yeah, that's...
That was already passed.
Already passed.
That was done.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments?
Committee dates.
Committee dates, I know.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just thought of this now. I'm not trying to fool anybody. I would like to make a motion to have Director, City Administrator, and staff to gain approval from the MPCA of locating an archery range at the old waste treatment plant.
Second for discussion.
And my reason for that, Mr. Mayor and council, is I remember what happened with the airport, and I'm not saying that the old waste treatment plant is where it's going to be, but before we get ourselves all worked up on this and get people's dreams going in the right direction, maybe we should check with the MPCA, since they have more role than the governor, and see if that would be an appropriate site without any impending circumstances that we'd find ourselves in later. And I would just like to move that motion.
That takes a motion?
Or refer to staff.
Staff can dig into it.
I think we can simply look at that as we, again, look at the park plan and what the possibilities are.
Yeah.
I don't think it requires a motion.
That could save a lot of time, though, if we'd find that out.
If we would include that in the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I will draw my second then.
I will draw my motion, refer to, refer to staff. Thank you.
We will now have the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Anderson, finance.
Finance Committee will meet next Monday, September 9th, and it's going to be here, and it's going to be televised. We're going to have the community groups come in and speak to us, so that, you know, hopefully, many of the members can make it here to, to listen to those community groups. It'll be the Design Center, oh, and I've got them written down, I lost my spot, the Design Center, the Southwest Integration Collaborative, WHAM BC, and the Community Marketing Coalition. So, we'll do that at 4:45, and then, then we'll turn into our regular Finance Committee after that. So hopefully, we can have members here, and they can ask questions of these community groups. And, and as I indicated earlier in the meeting, we will have a meeting on September 30th. Again, that will be for the full council, and we're going to talk about the budget, and we're also going to talk about the five-year plan. So, that's what we got for finance.
Thank you. Public Works, Mr. Councilman.
Tuesday, September 10th, 4:45.
September 10th at 4:45, and that would be at the Meeting Room One?
Conference Room One.
Conference Room One? And Councilman Amen, Labor?
Labor meeting Wednesday, the 16th or 17th? I don't have a count.
Sorry, Tuesday, the 17th, Councilmember.
Tuesday, the 17th, okay. Thank you.
And Councilman Fagerly on Community Development.
Thursday, September 12th, 4:45, Conference Room Number One. And I'm not sure will the Fair Board be invited to that one, or will do them when they follow up on their 2013 season?
Really, between now and then, I'll attempt to uncover the information that Councilmember DeBleek asked for earlier. I think it might be premature to bring the Fair Board in at this point, but we can discuss it at the committee level.
All right, thanks.
Is there any more discussion on anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.